The special public meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. Welcome everybody to this special community budget hearing. Can we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the board.
Mrs. Bates? Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you so much. This is kind of a different sort of board meeting. It is a budget engagement session. And as you can see, we set up for I don't know how many chairs, but guess what? You're here. So we're gonna have a wonderful discussion tonight. I think this is, it was intended to be uniquely designed around our budget concerns. Because number one, we've been very intentional about engaging the community in all of our decisions and all of our discussions. Secondly, I think we wanted to have an opportunity, as the way it is structured tonight, to really discuss the budget. So this is not necessarily a presentation, although you'll get somewhat of an overview, but it is intended to be a discussion. And our leaders tonight will talk to you about the format of this evening's activity. But I just wanted to, on behalf of the board, express our sincere gratitude to you all for coming. And we probably will have plenty of time to answer questions. The way the agenda is set up, we're gonna have a brief presentation by the Woodward students. We'll move right into the presentation and the activity for this evening. The presentation on key priorities has been scratched, so that is not gonna be an agenda item. And then afterwards, we wanna have a hearing of the public. And we intentionally put this at the end of the agenda, so that you would have time to absorb the information beforehand. And then the hearing of the public will allow you to make your comments and express concerns at the end of the agenda. So I am gonna turn it over to our wonderful superintendent for the introduction of our presentation.
Thank you, President Jones. So first of all, we would like to thank Principal Shawna Murphy for hosting us here in her wonderful, beautiful school. So thank you so much, Ms. Murphy. Thank you. Ms. Murphy's gonna come forward and she's going to introduce two of her students, young men, and I won't steal their thunder, but they're gonna do some very exciting things next year. They are graduating seniors. And so Ms. Murphy will introduce them, and then they'll talk to you about their school and their plans for the future.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell, President Jones, board members, Ms. Wagner. I am delighted to be able to introduce two brilliant young men to you. Woodward Career Technical High School is a very special school because we offer a comprehensive career technical experience for young people. Three of the program focuses that we have are in advanced manufacturing, health technologies, and in the building trades. And one point of emphasis is our career enrichment program, where young people are exposed to shadow experiences, group tours, and internships, or work-study experiences. And so both of the young people who will come before you, both Daylon and Shamir, are going to talk with you a little bit about their career tech experiences, especially their work-study internship opportunities.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I apologize, I'm not as dressed up as y'all, just came from track practice. But my name is Daylon. My name is Daylon Dallas, and it's Ms. Murphy, yes.
Daylon, excuse me, can you, we can hardly hear you over here. You gonna help him out?
It's good. Can you hear me?
Totally fine, yeah.
Good?
A little closer.
A little closer?
Yeah, there it is.
All right, so I'm on the advanced manufacturing side of the three pathways that we have here. And starting off in the 10th grade, we started learning about all the terminology about advanced manufacturing and all the tools that we need to know when we're out in the real world. So from the 10th grade all the way up to now, being a senior, we've been learning about the terminology and the things we need to do, so that when we go onto the real world, we'll know exactly what to do and what those employees will be expecting. So this year, now that we're on an internship now, I've been assigned to Steinhauser, which is a labeling company for companies that we know, like Juergens, Delotion, and Curell, and other, even beer companies. We just do the labeling there. And there, I learned how to work the machine that makes the labels. So I learned the ins and outs, just about everything. I just about operated there, and they just wanted me to help out. But everyone's been teaching me from sales all the way down to the machine, so I know just about everything about that company. And it's a nice program because you have people that's willing to teach you just about everything that goes on in the real world. There's nice people that teach you the ins and outs of a company. So they started me out from sales, and then they started me, they told me about shipping, they told me how to talk to the customer, and then they put me into the machine, where I learned the ins and outs, what ink to put in, what substrate to put in, and what I get out in the end result. So I've just been learning since the day they put me in October all the way till now in March. So it's a really good experience, and it really teaches you that you can learn things outside of the book, and you can learn things through experiences as well. And experiences teach you just as much as they do in the book. So I really enjoy this program, and hopefully the people after me can experience it as well.
Can y'all hear me? All right. My name is Shamira Hales. I'm a senior here at Woodward High School, and I'm on the advanced manufacturing side, just like Daylon. I've learned a lot in the advanced manufacturing side. We've learned a lot of processes, how to use a bunch of tools, a lot of stuff that'll help us outside of school when we graduate, and the same stuff that we could take to college with us. And my internship, I'm with a place called Gold Medal. So basically, they make popcorn, nachos, they make the machines that make that stuff. And it's three lines in my department, and I'm on the blue line. And we basically put together machines that they sell to different companies so they can make the popcorn, nachos, and stuff like that. So ever since I've been there, I've learned a lot. I really like the company, I like the people there, I appreciate everything they have taught me, and, yeah.
All right. Okay. Before we move on, Daylon and Shamir? Shamir? Okay. We wanna see if board members are, because we have just, we have just a small group here, are you able to respond to questions or comments? Okay. Do board members have questions or comments for the two guys, two students? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, we chatted just a little bit, and then we got cut off there. So you mentioned some of your next step ideas as far as college, and you both mentioned maybe UC, et cetera, and a major. Based on what you've learned, what would be your ideal job, given the things that you've had experience with so far here through your program?
Okay. My ideal job, kinda as I expressed to you already, would be being a biomedical engineer. And the pathway that I've taken here, and the things that I plan on doing even after this school year, will set me up for that. And this pathway's kind of piqued my interest more than it would at a regular school, where I'd just be learning regular classes. Like, in my pathway, I'm being taught the more the engineering side. And after graduation, I plan on going to an internship at Cincinnati Children's, where I'll be learning the medical side. And then in the fall, I go to UC, where I'll be learning both of those things. So that way, I go into college having some type of understanding about what I wanna go into.
Great.
All right. My ideal job would be electrical engineering. I feel like majority of the stuff that we've learned here will help me advance in that career, and, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone in the audience have questions? Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Thank you, President Jones. All around the city, people are, people younger than you all, are trying to decide what high school to go to. And I would be interested in knowing what it was about Woodward that made you choose Woodward in the first place, and what would you tell some of those folks making choices now that they should consider? Because I think we really need kind of the student experience to help influence those decisions. So what made you come to Woodward, and why do you think other people should?
So as everyone knows, some years back, they made the change in elementary schools where it wouldn't be seventh and eighth grade, or something like that. And even as a young kid, I always expressed to my mom, because she wanted to be a biomedical engineer, I always wanted to be an engineer. And I had that passion since I was little. And when we were looking through the list of schools, we went through, and we seen that Woodward had pathways, they actually had pathways that I could follow and go through where my interests would be, where I'd be taught, and my interests would keep going. It wouldn't just fade off if I just go to a regular school. So for students that are having trouble deciding the school that they wanna go to, I would encourage them to look into the school and what programs they have, so whatever interest they have doesn't go away, so they're able to keep going, and their dream job stays with them, and it doesn't change.
Great. Thank you.
All right. I feel like students, like deciding which school they should go to, like Woodward is a good school because the main three programs, like you've got construction, you've got health, and you've got advanced manufacturing, I feel like those are three very good careers. And each side helps you towards like being in whatever position in the career you want to be in. And I feel like it's helped me a lot, and I know for a fact it'll help a lot of other people.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Gentlemen, I'm really excited about both of your presentations here today. Thank you for that. Can you tell me what neighborhoods you're from, and how your school experience has helped you at home in your community?
I live in Western Hills, way across.
Yeah, we know.
Way out the way. But my experience here has helped my community in a sense to where I know where to guide people that are younger than me. I can't necessarily help the people that are the same age as me that are in different schools, because I don't know their situation. But people like my brother and my sister, or their friends that may need guidance, I can tell my brother and my sister about, oh, I go to Woodward where there's three fields, and if you have an interest in health, you can go here. If you have an interest in construction, you can go here. So I feel like my experiences has helped me to guide the younger generation on where they should go for the future.
Great.
Honestly, I feel the same way as Daylon. Like, I'm from, I live in Gulf Manor, and the same as him, my little brother and sister, they want, like my little sister, she wants to go in health, my little brother, he's following after me, he wants to go in engineering. And I tell them, like, my little brother, he's in the seventh grade, he goes to Clark right now, and if things don't work out there, I feel like he should come to Woodward because of the three programs. Like, he can go into engineering, and that'll help him a lot. And I feel the same way about my sister. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving your time, staying a little late, and I hope your track works out for you. And I'm very much, I am very impressed with how you guys present about what your experience has been like here, and the fact that you are being role models and mentors for your younger siblings, and hopefully spread the word to other young people who you interact with. Let them know what some of their options are. You know, even, you don't have to make the decision for them, but help them think through how to make those kinds of decisions. Thank you, thank you again. Superintendent Mitchell, you wanna present the budget presentation?
Yes. So would the board prefer that I do it here or at the podium?
Do you all have a preference?
Nope.
Wherever you're comfortable is fine.
All right, I'll stay here. So we're really excited within our district, because as I've said over and over again this school year, our enrollment is growing. And so the reason that is so important is because it's a signal to us that we're doing that we're doing some things that are right in terms of the decisions that the board is making as it relates to our schools, so much so that people are choosing to go to our district. Where other large urban districts in the state are losing enrollment and are growing by a very small number of students, we have grown by over four thousand students since 2012. Because of that growth and because of the interest in our quality seats within our district, as the public knows and the board, we opened three schools last year. So we opened Carthage, which has preschool. We opened Leap, which is on the west side of town and has a Spanish program. And we also opened Spencer, which is in Walnut Hills, which has a focus on gifted and exceptional children, those children who fall just below the gifted range. But we're not done in terms of our growth and our expansion and widening our footprint across the city. For the upcoming school year, we're already planning and already on um, the next school year, we will be opening three sites, two new schools. So Cairns School will be opening, that is the Clifton School. It will be opening as a pre-K through sixth grade school. Next year, it will be pre-K through grade three. And then we also will be opening the Mercy Site. Um, in that building, Gamble Montessori will be moving into that. Gamble High School ha, will be moving into that location. And we anticipate as well, opening the current Gamble School as an elementary Montessori school to really um, take um, take a lion's share of the students who are on the waitlist for Montessori, but also to help reduce the overcrowdedness that's taking place on the west side of town. So many of you may know that we have schools on the west side of town, elementary schools, that have over eight hundred kids within them. And that might be one reason that this young man is traveling all the way across the west, from the west side of town to here. I, I think it's truly because he loves Woodward and what the, the program has to offer. But as you can see, we have a lot of overcrowdedness over on the west side of town. And so an elementary school with a Montessori focus will help us um, better accommodate our students, but also appeal to our parents who want a Montessori program, which have been very popular within the district. I think the two gentlemen that spoke really um, highlighted what we wanted to accomplish with the My Tomorrow Initiative. And I will say in no way, shape or form would My Tomorrow try to claim um, any credit, take any credit for their success. Because Shauna Murphy, Principal Murphy, already had this program within her school before we started My Tomorrow, which is releasing it around getting our kids to a place beyond CPS. And so you know, a real big kudos and shout out to not only the principal, but Mr. Freo, who was the LSDMC Chair for many years and really had the insight and the vision to create those three pathways here. But those young men really um, highlight what My Tomorrow is really all about. And they were just quite honestly light years ahead of us from a district perspective. So again, thank you for your hard work and dedication, all that you've done for our young people. At about the time we started the My Tomorrow Initiative, um, many community members came out and said, well, what about our elementary schools? Why should I have to leave my neighborhood to receive a magnet-like focus? And the board said, you're absolutely right. And the board charged the administration with coming up with Vision 2020, which would put a magnet-like focus in all of our neighborhood elementary schools. Next year will be Cohort Four and, and by the end of next year, all of our neighborhood elementary schools will have a magnet-like focus. So we're very excited about that. At about the time we started Vision 2020, My Tomorrow and a lot of really good things happening within the district, we also had the privilege and the honor to be able to onboard new uh, board members. And with that excitement and energy to the board, um, the district decided to, at the board's direction, enter into a three-year strategic plan. And the board was very clear that we, that they wanted a dynamic plan, one that wasn't stagnant, one that wasn't um, sitting on the shelf. And so they decided to go with a three-year direction, which would allow us the opportunity to be nimble enough to pivot and change direction, not completely lose our focus, but to really make sure that we could address any changes that are taking place across the United States or within our region. And so the board outlined five major priorities that would be a part of this new strategic direction that will launch in August of 2019. The board has identified these priorities as number one, student-centered decision-making. Number two, safety and security. Number three, growth. The board is interested, we opened three schools last year, two new schools for the upcoming school year, three sites. The board is interested in expanding our footprint and continuing to open more schools across the area. Number four, to make sure that we have better systems that are more efficient and effective for all of our stakeholders and of course, community engagement, which is what tonight is all about. The board has actually been engaged in the strategic planning process since the beginning of the school year, when the board put together a committee, Strategic Planning and Engagement Committee, made up of um, about thirty community members. And there are some community members who are here. And so I'd like to recognize those community members who sit on the step team. If you would please stand. Thank you. This committee has been meeting every month since August and sometimes twice a month to really identify what are the strengths within our districts, uh, district with, what are the weaknesses, what are the opportunities and what are the threats? And so um, that group has been meeting and has worked through that and has been able to um, identify very specific things for us to focus on in our strategic plan. The board then charged the administration with um, identifying a consultant to work with us to develop the strategic plan side by side. And so a couple of months ago, we identified a company called Engage to Learn. If you're really interested in the work and it's very exciting, um, please tune in tomorrow at our eight o'clock board meeting in which Engage to Learn will provide a presentation as to the update of our work so far. And our goal is to have our strategic plan done by the end of June to be able to launch in August. That sounds like a very, very tight timeframe. But if you consider that quite honestly, the board has been working on this for the entire school year, starting in August, we feel that we are positioned very well to, to have a product ready for the end of the school year. So as we think about um, the strategic initiatives for the upcoming school year and the next three years, it, it makes sense for us to then turn our direction to the budget that will support our initiatives. And so Treasurer Wagner is going to talk about the very specific investments that we plan to make next year as it relates to our budget, which is aligned to the board's priorities.
Thank you, Laura. So I get to work with a lot of numbers and um, the budget process is always not a fun process for people. And sometimes the information is very dry. And so I've tried hard to come up with different ways to um, to communicate financial information in a more engaging way. And so if I could put my slide up, please? Oh, I have handouts, so that's gonna be really hard for you to read. Thank you.
Is there a way to dim the lights without a?
I don't know.
Principal Murphy, is there a way to kind of dim the lights temporarily? Or if we cut them off, can we get them back on? Okay.
Oh, sorry. If it's um...
We, we did just get handouts that, you know, but it's kind of nice to look at the screen for those of us who need glasses.
No, no, no. Okay, so is that better? You can hear me better, thank you. Um, okay, so what I've tried to do here is to show a continuum from preschool to graduation, our strategic initiatives and the investments that we're making in for um, the upcoming budget year. Um, so starting with safety and security, which is um, a strong strategic initiative, next year, we're investing in an additional thirteen security assistance and fifty-nine more um, in-school suspension classrooms simply because of a law change around younger children um, where we can't suspend them. And so that represents eight and a half million dollar budget and an increase of two point two from the previous year. So under the equity initiative, um, we started a new process this year in, in determining that our state, I'm sorry, our district staffing formulas made things equal but not equitable. And so we created a new process for the schools to tell us what they needed for equity so that their schools could be successful. And so that process, while it was a very new for us, it was fascinating to be a part of. We saw some very interesting trends. And we were able to put forth an extra four million dollars into the schools that are specific to the customized needs of each school. And I just given you some examples of what, some of the trends. So there are a lot of tutoring requests, a lot of um, effort around social emotional learning with school, school social workers, um, assistant principals because enrollments are growing. Um, and then additional teachers that focus on programmatic needs. Third on the list, that really starts in the middle of our K eight buildings. I think we're down to third grade now with the My Tomorrow Initiative, uh, where we're focusing on enrolling, enlisting and employing. Um, but we've addition, we've expanded our counseling staff, excuse me. We realized in our K eight buildings, our seventh and eighth graders weren't getting counseling time like our seventh and eighth graders in our seven twelve buildings and that we had fallen behind on the staffing ratio compared to national standards. So we're trying to get to a um, ratio of one counselor to every three hundred and fifty students. This year, we're at four, at four fifty. Um, and so next year, we'll try to reduce that ratio. Um, we've added companion classes in both math and reading at the high school level to help students um, graduate on time. And we um, added twenty-six Microsoft industry credential teachers so that our children can um, meet different graduation pathways. The fourth bullet down there in Vision 2020, we're adding eight more schools for next year. So that represents a three point four million dollar increase of the budget. As this will be the last year of Vision 2020 kickoff. And so we'll be supporting those programs as they continue to implement. What we're wa, seeing is that the first year is implementation planning, the second year is another larger investment and then they start to integrate into the regular budget. The fifth bullet down there under growth and academics, so um, Superintendent Mitchell talked about our growth in enrollment. And so we have to hire more teachers and more support staff to help educate those students. And so, and then she mentioned the three schools that we're opening. We also have a very large investment in our curricular department with new textbook adoptions in the area of English Language Arts, Health and PE. That represents about a three million dollar budget line item. And then of course, we've been working hard on our preschool expansion. Um, we're, we plan to add uh, five more classrooms next year in um, some variety of different locations. And um, with that, we're having to add some staff to our special education diagnostic teams because as this, more students come in, they have to be evaluated. So that represents, just adding the preschool classrooms, just to set up the classroom by the materials, by the furniture and the teaching and staffing that goes with it, is another one point three million dollars that will be added to the budget for next year. Um, and then last but not least, is our community support efforts around um, funding our resource coordinators and our school community coordinators that help engage our families and um, partners in our academics. So that represents an increase of a million dollars for us for next year. And so while we might not be able to invest in everything they want next year, these are the things that we're trying to set money aside so that we support our strategic initiatives so that we, these initiatives can be successful like these two gentlemen that spoke today. It's an honor to try to help allocate financial resources to those kinds of programs. So as I sit in the treasurer's office, I don't get to work with kids very often. And so when I get to see um, those kinds of presentations, it really adds a lot of meaning to what I do every day. And so it's a, like I said, it's an honor to do that. And so the process that we're under right now is we are working hard on the central office or centrally managed budgets. It's not just central administration that we're working on. It's things that are managed centrally, but they're allocated out to the schools. And so uh, we're working through those processes. So we anticipate at the next hearing in April, we'll be able to present more of a holistic budget. And um, we're happy to answer any questions at this point.
Okay, so we're, we'll open up, are you accepting questions? I'm not quite sure in the next sort of phase of this, of tonight, if it will be opportunity for our audience to ask the questions? Or do you want to ask, do we want to pose those now? Do board members or members of the audience have questions about what has just been presented by our superintendent and treasurer? Yes, Ms. Bolton?
It would be great for the superintendent to um, also talk in terms of the um, the mission margin matrix. I think that would be helpful as to how you've made, you know, ready to make certain recommendations.
Yeah, absolutely. So as we began our work, um, in terms of after we received the priorities from the board, then really looking at how are we going to allocate money to support those strategic initiatives? And we decided to um, to try a new process where we would really look at what we were currently funding within the district and to identify those things we would stop doing to be able to fund the new things and the things that have proven to work, since we can't fund it all. And so we started a process that's called um, mission, um, it's really called a mission margin matrix. And so it's basically a, a large um, chart in which you identify those things that are high impact, low cost, high impact, high cost, low impact, low cost, low impact, high cost. And so we um, charged the, the leadership team with taking each one of the major things that we fund and putting it on a post-it with a dollar value and putting it in that matrix. And we really challenged our, each other's thinking in terms of those things that we are doing that quite honestly are not on our mission, has low impact and is costing us a lot of money. And those are things that quite honestly, the research says you should stop doing. And so we, we looked at that matrix and we challenged the thinking and, and there were some things that we decided not to do. And there's some things that we decided to not do and reallocate those funds to something that had a proven track record within our district. Um, our next step is to be able to layer under um, those things that are high impact, low cost, because that's where you really want to be. What's the data to show and prove that those things have high impact? And so again, we, we really challenged the thinking. One of the things that came up on a post-it was the, the English Language Arts adoption. And it's a, it's about a four million? About three million dollars um, investment. And initially, we had that in the high impact, high cost area. But then we decided to, uh, we asked, well, well, how many students would this serve? And this will serve all thirty-six thousand of our kids. So once you take the three million and divide it by thirty-six thousand, then it really only comes out to be a hundred and four dollars per kid. So that's high impact, but technically really, that's low cost. And so we're really making those really conscious decisions, recognizing that we can't do it all. And quite honestly, we shouldn't do everything. We should stay on mission and um, do those things that we know are working. And so that's the work that we're doing. There are some other things that quite honestly are high or low impact as it relates to our mission of educating kids, but they're high cost. And there are some things that quite honestly, we're, we'll continue to do some things. So, so as an example, um, transportation is one. So transportation is really quite honestly, it's not our mission. But we know that um, the state requires us to transport our kids at the elementary level, but not at the high school level. But even though we don't have to at the high school level, it's a conscious decision that the board is making in the best interest of our kids. Okay, but it's high cost. We spent over forty million dollars last year in transportation costs. So our challenge is, we're gonna continue to do, but how can we get those costs down as low as possible so we can divert those funds to those items that are high impact? And so we have our, our transportation director who's really working to make sure they can get those costs down so we can take those dollars and use them for something else. And so that's what we're challenging each of our departments to do, is to really dig down deep and prove the data. Show me the data that says this thing that you're doing, that you want to fund, that costs all this money, that it really works.
Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones, and thank you Treasurer Wagner and Superintendent Mitchell. I first wanted to say thank you for um, all of your effort putting into this, particularly with this equity lens. And Superintendent Mitchell, um, if you were paying attention, um, said at the board's direction numerous times in our presentation. And so thank you also for your agility and leadership in getting all this together. We did not expect to open a brand new Montessori school a month ago, um, but we're gonna be able to do it. And you ref- And you reference doing what we know is working. We know that our Montessori programs work, and so I just kind of wanted to highlight that and thank you all. I only have two small questions. One is largely for the community certification, for folks who are here, people who may be watching at home. There's been talk that school, community, resource coordinators won't be funded next year, but they will be. And I just want to, it's kind of a question, but also for, more for the public's certification because there's lots of talk about it because we've got some funding cut from other sources, but we're allocating an additional million. Is that correct?
Yes, so there's a lot of confusion surrounded around resource coordinators because what we were hearing is that some of the partner, community partners were changing their partnerships with individual schools. At the same time, there was some grants that had have ended, and so the general fund absorbed that cost, but there was never any talk about terminating resource coordinators.
Hi, I just wanted to echo what Jen said. We did have about $500,000 in grants that expired at the end of the school year. That was planned, and we expected that. And as Treasurer Wagner indicated, the general fund has absorbed those funds. As part of the power-up around community learning centers, some of our partners are determining right now, do they want to remain a lead agency? And so that work's going to be done through the lead agencies as well as working with those LSDMCs. So there could be some transition with staff or lead agency changes, but all of that, I think, if you talk to any of the leaders of lead agencies, is a total positive. They're all, my understanding is feeling really good about the trajectory where we're headed, and we're going to be able to bring in some new lead agency partners so we can meet the board's objective of having resource coordinators at all 65 schools.
Awesome, thank you. And then the last one, the five new classroom, preschool classrooms that'll be located around, do we know what side of town they'll be on or where specifically?
Yes, if I can remember correctly, we are adding a classroom at Carson, moving a classroom from Midway over to Gamble Elementary and replacing that with another classroom. So the preschool disabilities unit's moving into Gamble. And then there's nine, so we're moving the west, the four classrooms from Westwood into Gamble Elementary as well. And I think that represents the five new classrooms.
So Treasurer Wagner and I met with the interim director for early childhood on Monday, and we talked through, quite honestly, in which she provided us a list of all the classrooms that are currently in the district and which ones are filled to capacity and which ones aren't. And so we, quite honestly, really tried to go with a conservative number of five classrooms. And I know that there are people who want us to be a lot more aggressive, but at the same time, we have to be fiscally responsible, make sure we can fill those classrooms. So for example, we're not adding an additional classroom at the Vine Street location because we have quite a few empty seats there. And then when the CAN students actually move out of that building, then we'll have even more classrooms there. And so we were trying to be very responsible in making sure that we'll be able to fill those seats, but we're also going out and trying to make sure that we can draw people in to make sure that they have access to the preschool classrooms. But I just don't remember off the top of my head where they all are. Carson, thank you.
Carthage, two at Carthage.
Two at Carthage, one at Gamble, one at Midway, and one at Carson. Thank you.
You have a question? Mr. Messer?
Thank you. My question is just relative to the incremental spend of the $35.5 million. Did I read that correctly? Yeah, so could you speak to where those dollars came from? Were those reallocated dollars and, which I assume that they were because it's not like we had any money falling from the sky, but could you speak to where those dollars came from? Maybe some of those things that we're going to not invest in further and reallocate? So where those dollars came from?
So we're in process of working through that, so I can't give you any definitive line items, but the five-year forecast anticipated an increase in expenditures because we anticipated an increase in enrollment in the forecast. So our budget target went up from the previous year. Having said that, draft data is even higher than that at this point. So we are, Laura and I are working very diligently with individual budget managers to challenge their thinking so that they're not just saying, I got $10 million last year for electricity, I need $10 million this year without data to back it up. And so we're playing good cop, bad cop, alternating. So we're really challenging to make sure that what we're spending our money on is maximizing our process and investments. And so in the 25 years I've been with this district, we have never, ever come below the budget target on our asks. So we always have to go through a process by challenging, can we scope, can we, can things be delayed? Can we reduce the scope a little bit and still be effective? And that's always an interesting process that we go through, and typically, we ask for public engagement to see, you know. But we are also working on making sure that we're maximizing our grant monies so that not everything is hitting the general fund. And so we're looking at those opportunities. At the same time, the federal grant monies are becoming much more restrictive, and compliance is difficult to be, you know, creative funding. So it's a challenge, and we're working through that, but we'll certainly have more information as we get closer to the end product.
If I could add to that, so Treasurer Wagner and I, we sat down and we met with every single budget manager on leadership team, one-on-one, in a very long meeting to go through every single thing that they were asking for within their budget requests. They had to complete a document in which they identified their very specific goals for next year aligned to the board's priorities, the strategies aligned to that, and then the budget that supports it. And so we're saying that, quite honestly, in order for you to access more money to do new things, you have to prove that you have been successful on the core items that you said you would do in terms of your strategies. And so this is going to be a major part of our work next year as we gain some efficiencies within our budget, but we are really challenging people on, well, did you complete or did you do the things that you committed to doing, and what are the results to show in order to be able to access the dollars that you're asking for?
We also went through a process where everything on the wish list went up on the wall, and then we determined, we went through to determine whether it was an A, B, or C. A being it's a strategic investment that's aligned and we have to go forward, we need to move forward with it. B, it's a great idea, but you need to find the money in your own budget to pay for it so it's cost-neutral. Or C was either no or no, not right now, and maybe next year. So that helps work through that process for people.
My question has to do with the equity line. You know, the terminology or the concept of equity is not always a concrete kind of thing. And so I was curious to know what was, what was administration's process in helping the principals understand what equity is and how to decide what falls in that category?
So as Jen indicated, we decided to do a different process this year as it relates to equity, and there are, quite honestly, a lot of other things that we fund in terms of equity, whether we're talking about advanced placement, college credit plus, ACT. So there are a lot of things that we're doing, technology as it relates to equity. We came to the conclusion, though, that quite honestly, that we are setting a standard in terms of the staffing that should be in the school, but to really turn and ask the school, what do you think you need as opposed to having a one-size-fits-all and giving everyone everything? We used some staffing formulas to identify, you know, using staffing formulas, how many teachers you need, assistant principals, staff as relates to civil service staff, but then beyond that, beyond the core and the standard, what does a school need? And we worked with the principals, did a presentation with them around equity led by Susan Bunty, our assistant superintendent. And we asked the schools to go back and work with your LSDMCs and your ILTs to decide, what do you need? And we created a document in which you had to identify what you were asking for, but what's the research and what's your school data that supports that you need this thing and that what you want to try has worked other places or within your school. And so we put that together, and it had to be signed off on by the principal and the ILT chair. And then leadership team, we took two whole days where we sat through and we went through every single one of those equity requests. And the first thing that we did is we checked to make sure there was a signature by the ILT and the principal, which was a signal that wasn't just one person did this plan. And then we identified those things that we believed, according to the research and the data that was provided, would do well for the school to receive. And so every school got some of what they asked for, but they may not have received everything that they asked for. And so we really believe that equity doesn't say that everyone gets the same thing, it says that you get what you need to do the work you have to do. And so different schools receive different things, and to be very transparent with you, different schools receive different amounts of money based upon the need for their school. And so that's how we approached the equity piece. We would love to, in April, May, or June, bring to the board a presentation which outlines we have just completed our first draft of a strategic equity plan where we dug down into discipline, staffing, resources, money, where we really dug down and took a hard look at what it means to be equitable in all of those areas, working with internal people, but there are also external people on that team as well. And so we're, we actually, I received the plan this week, and we would love to be able to bring that to the board to further explain how we're seeing equity within our district, but then also to get your feedback and your ideas about what we can also do to further our equity effort.
Great, thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Appreciate the work that Superintendent and the Treasurer and the staff make for all of us. I think it is true that some of the, most of the big, big things that happen in the district actually are board-driven, or they wouldn't be able to happen. I mean, and that means that they're driven by what the community wants and needs because we're representing the community. We don't think up these things on our own. So, you know, when you talk in terms of moving the high schools, as one of our young gentlemen said, to 712, that was a board-driven. The equity movement, it was a board or community-driven effort. And we have some of the great thinkers and strategic folks in these two top positions so it's, we can get the implementation done that we need. I am concerned about the Community Learning Center model because the board policy, which should also impact, obviously, budget, board policy says that all of our schools will be community learning centers, and they are not yet from the standpoint that they all do not yet have a resource coordinator. And now, as we go through this issue of powering up, we're in the process of trying to find additional lead agencies. So I think that's a critical piece to add to this, and I'm interested in knowing how board policy or board initiatives impact the big thinking that you have to go through, both of you particularly leading the staff, to make these recommendations because you really don't make choices, you make recommendations, and they reflect your best professional judgment, and then you give those recommendations to us. So just if you could talk a little bit more about the role of the board slash the community in developing where we are regarding priorities and budget and issues like that.
So I'll start and then ask Jen to jump in. So one of the first things that we did last school year in thinking about board policy is, to be quite honest with you, we recognized that we weren't following board policy. And it wasn't because we were intentionally trying to avoid it, but quite honestly, many of the people in our district weren't aware of all the policies that the board has. And so our role is to make sure that there is an implementation of the policies that the board adopts. And so last year, we worked with the policy committee to identify a rotation of when policies would be reviewed, and then, as importantly as the review and the adoption of the board policies, we worked with the administration to develop procedures to go along with the board policies. So it's been a very long time since we've had a procedure manual that says, here's the board policy, and this is what it looks like when it's enacted. And so we have been, over the last two school years, been working on the development of those board policies in terms of procedures to say, this is what it looks like, and this is how it should look within our schools and also within central office. And so we've been cleaning up all of those procedures so that we can roll them out to our leadership team at the central office level and everyone at the central office as well as within our schools. And so we will have a set of procedures and protocols that are aligned to the board policies. And so that's one of our first steps in terms of making sure that the board's priorities are actually being implemented in a really concrete way within our district and across the district. And I'm sorry, I can't remember the second part of your question.
I think you took care of both parts with that.
Ms. Wagner, were you going to comment or?
I didn't know. Okay.
So we really wanted this evening to be more of a dialogue, and we had, we do have a couple of people who wanted to speak as part of hearing of the public, but, and I do want to give them the opportunity to speak, but I wanted to open it up a little bit, a little bit of a different flavor. It wasn't supposed to be like a formal board meeting, it's supposed to be a community dialogue. So like to open it up for questions or comments, anything that the audience wants to make. Mr. Rosen, we'll start with you, and Ms. Bowers will get you next.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, Superintendent Mitchell, Treasurer Wagner, President Jones, Vice President Messer, board members Bolton, Davis, and Morowski. With a short board tonight, I think I can say everybody's name. First off, I'd like to thank Principal Murphy for hosting tonight. It's clear from the students earlier that you not only have earned their respect, but you're well-liked as well, so kudos to you. My question for Treasurer Wagner and the superintendent is, we've heard about the equity inclusion. I think it's fantastic that roughly $61-plus million is being spent on school investments, and more than half of that is new allocations, and I think it's really important. I've heard from, being active in the district, I've heard from a lot of teachers, LSDMC, ILT members and principals about the equity inclusion component and how successful that was for them. But I think there's something that is just as important as, you know, following the board's will, and that is the process itself. I've heard wonderful things this year, how the process has started earlier and was more transparent, and I wondered if you could share maybe a little bit about the process this year and why that's the case compared to maybe other years in the past.
Great question, thank you. So what we, we met with a group of principals from last year. We had a rather challenging year last year in developing the budget, and so in our spirit of continuous process improvement, we asked principals to meet with us. And so we asked them about, you know, how can we be better and how can we make the process better? And getting the data in their hands sooner so they have more time to make valuable decisions was one of them. And so we made a commitment to give them their first round of staffing based off of student projections in November. And so we made their base staffing in November. And then that same group of principals, as we were discussing how to make things better, they had this very robust conversation between them to say, my school at Mount Airy is very different than South Avondale, which is very different than Hyde Park, and we need different kinds of resources so that your formulas don't meet that need. And so we started talking about, well, where did, would that data come from? So I was trying to, in my head, I was trying to figure out, how do I create a formula around equity? And, you know, I'm very numeric, so it was, it was a concept I was having difficulty grasping. So when I was sharing that with Superintendent, she was, Jen, why don't we just ask them what they want? So we came up with that process to ask what they wanted, and we helped guide them through how to make their asks measurable so we could determine whether we're getting the return on investment. And then we also revised the prior budget development Excel spreadsheet system into a web-based product called Open Gov in their budget module, and so it's all web-based, and it's helping us move faster in the budget development because we're not losing track of different versions of spreadsheets, but it's also going to give me the ability to do the analytics on the budget as we build. One of the things that we just talked about was, how much money are we spending on professional development per adult? Looks like some people have access to more money, and so we're spending more, and are we really getting our return on investment for that? And so we're looking at travel and professional development. How much money are we spending on office supplies per adult? And are we being... And are we being effective and financially frugal with those dollars? And so it's been a really interesting year. Some things didn't go as well as we had hoped, but we're focusing on making things better. One of the things that we learned and heard from was the school instructional leadership team that's supposed to help develop the budget. And so in terms of staffing, they helped determine their fine arts allocations and how to spread out their non-personal cost allocations. And not every school understood their role. And so we're going to create a class for the ILT and the building reps to come in at the beginning of the process next year so we can teach them our budget building process. They can be better prepared to participate. Want to add anything to that?
A follow-up. I think that's fantastic that the process was started early and so it's going to maybe be resolved in a more amicable timeframe for the schools. I would be curious if that would put you in a stronger position to be able to give a forecast to the board as it relates to the need to renew a levy? And if so, that might afford the board to expedite discussions on a levy so that we're not waiting till the middle of summer.
So we're planning to have a conversation, a second conversation at the finance committee tomorrow around levy options and pros and cons of each. And so we're hoping that the board will make a decision on what direction we're going to go to within the next couple of weeks. So we are trying to get more responsive. The challenge going forward in the future is the state has delayed our five-year forecasting process from October into November, so it's going to make it a little bit harder to react. But we'll figure it out as we go.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Good evening, everybody. Question regarding the Gamble Elementary, and I want to commend the district on opening up the new Montessori elementary school. But I have a question. In my head, I'm calculating the number of classrooms. I think I heard you say we're going to move to the Gamble building once Gamble-Montessori transitions out for next year. I'm calculating nine preschool classrooms, is that right? There are four there currently. You're moving four from Westwood and one from Carson.
Some of those will convert into Montessori classrooms, the three to six.
Okay.
And so, quite honestly, we're going to grow slow because we're not sure that we can fill that building in its first year. And so we anticipate, quite honestly, contacting those parents who are on the waitlist for Dater-Montessori, which there are approximately 400 of them, but it shakes out into all different age ranges. But, so we anticipate opening at least three of those classrooms as Montessori three to six, and then one six to nine, and then one nine to 12, unless we see that there's a greater demand for other grade levels or ranges.
And another question, how would you man the other six preschool, if I'm calculating right? Those are preschool and early childhood is not in alignment with neighborhood community. It's kind of open to available seats across the district. So how, what would you do with those kids once they are ready to go to kindergarten if they're not feeding into that three or six to nine?
Yeah, so we actually have put a lot of thought and action into that. So what we've done is the four classrooms that are currently at Westwood and the classrooms that are currently at Dater, I'm sorry, at Gamble-Montessori, we have been in contact with those parents to first of all, see if any of those parents are interested in the Montessori program. Some of them have expressed an interest, some of them have said they don't know, and some of them have said, absolutely, I'm not interested in that. And so that's why we're going to grow slowly to make sure that we can meet the need for Montessori on that side of town. One thing that we also started to do this year, which quite honestly, we learned from Columbus City Schools, and I'm a part of the Urban Eight, and each quarter, there's a presentation that's done by one of the members of the Urban Eight to highlight a best practice. And in Columbus, in preschool, at the beginning of the school year begins your transition, if you're four years old, to kindergarten. And so we started a transition program within our preschools under the leadership of our interim director, Vera Brooks. That is a transition from preschool to kindergarten. To be quite honest with you, about 40% of the students who start with us in preschool don't necessarily go to one of our kindergarten classrooms. They go to private schools, they go to parochial schools, and they go to charter schools. So we're being very aggressive this year and saying, oh, no, 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 no. We have a school for you. Let us help us match you, like you do college matching. Let us help match you to your elementary school that fits your need. And so we've already worked out a process where we've been doing that work over the course of this school year as a result of learning from Columbus.
You have another question?
Just one more.
Okay.
In same reference. So are you able to calculate the area of town for which the current preschool parents in Westwood and Gamble, are they westsiders or are they from across 75? And I'm thinking of that in regards to transportation, if they stay at Gamble for kindergarten preschool, or for six to nine?
So there are a mix. And to be honest with you, I don't have the data in front of me, so I can't tell you off the top of my head. A good portion of them do live on the west side of town only because parents want where they live to be close to them transporting, because we don't transport preschoolers to their school. And so many of them do live on the west side of town, but not all of them.
Okay. I saw Ms. Prather's hand, but if you want to go ahead and ask your question, Ms. Prather, and then Michaela Oldfield? Okay, she had also put in for the hearing of the public. We'll get you after, Ms. Prather.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak, and thank you all for this community budget and finance meeting. This is important to have the community come in and voice our concern. I want to address the item, the line item that addresses community support, and I want to reiterate Craig Rosen's sentiment about Ms. Murphy. Ms. Murphy, you are amazing. Ms. Murphy, you host all types of community events. I've been here for the Greek step show, the college tours, any, you open your doors, and that speaks, that resonates, or it speaks volumes about you as a principal. And then also the students who spoke, I, you know, I wanted to jump in and ask them a question, but, you know, they are evidence of the fruits of your labor, so you should be commended. And the question I have is, I can appreciate the district's efforts to engage families in the process. So what are some ideas that you have, or what are some ways that you're going to pull people in to engage them in the, I guess, the learning process? Or what are your plans in terms of bringing families in, engaging them, in terms of getting the community support or providing support to them? Because the reason I ask is because a lot of times the students will use the school environment as a distraction for what's going on in their lives outside of school. And so how are you going to address those needs or what are your ideas for that?
So we've been in the process of engaging our families, quite honestly, all school year. Can we do a better job of it? Absolutely, it's like communication, you have to like over-communicate whatever it is that you want people to know. But there have been things we've been doing throughout the school year to engage the community, whether it's opening a new school like Clifton. We engage the community a lot, like on a monthly basis, since for over a year in terms of the opening of that school. We also did quite a bit of community engagement as we prepared to open the Mercy site, not just parents who live in the community, but parents from all over the district, as well as alumni of Mercy, as well as students, as well as staff members. And so there are quite a few things that we do at a district-wide level to engage community. I will say that probably some of our most impactful engagement though takes place at the schoolhouse. And that's because in many instances, the parents and the community, they trust, they love, they listen to their teachers, their principals. And so that's where, quite honestly, a lot of community engagement is taking place. When I think about Vision 2020, every single one of those neighborhood schools that has taken on a Vision 2020 initiative, we took them through a day of how do you engage your community around the program focus that will go in your school? And so we've been doing that for the last three years. We don't decide which program focus goes in a school, the community does. And the school, they create an application to be a part of Vision 2020, and it has to have this community engagement component in there. When we start the My Tomorrow Work, we really engage the community using external facilitators. And we engaged parents and business people and university people. And we said to them, what do you want to see out of a Cincinnati Public Schools graduate? Because at the end of the day, that's what it's about. And so there's a lot of community engagement that we do at the district level, but then also a lot of it takes place at the school level. We have quarterly district-wide LSDMC meetings, which also is an opportunity to engage communities. I'm meeting, I think in a couple of weeks, with PTA or PTSO presidents of our schools. And so we're constantly trying to think of ways to authentically engage our community in the work that we're doing. We're also, quite honestly, open to ideas and suggestions that you have as well. We do believe that engagement doesn't necessarily mean you have to show up to a location. And so we have something called Thought Exchange where we can pose a question, and then you can answer that question in terms of getting engagement. And then you can star those things that you really like. And so we're trying to, quite honestly, come up with a lot of different ways to engage people that is beyond having them come to the school or come to the central office level.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Oldfield?
Hi, my name is Michaela Oldfield. You might recognize me from a couple of months ago. We were here, I'm part of a Coalition for the Good Food Purchasing Program, which we've been advocating that the school board adopt this policy. Thank you for adopting a formal policy last month. We're very excited about it. And I actually came to talk about sort of how that fits into the budget because while it's a very exciting change to potentially the cafeteria policies and cafeteria purchasing, there's a lot out there in terms of how, what happens in the cafeteria needs to be supported in the classrooms, in the curriculum, and in community engagement. And so I'm actually here to just sort of ask if there's any planned budgetary to support in terms of implementation of the Good Food Purchasing Program? And what kind of sort of education and nutrition and community resources are planned for integrating what happens into the classroom, what's going to happen in the cafeterias into classroom experiences?
So I can answer part A of your question, but not necessarily part B. So in terms of the budget, our food service department is one of the most efficient operating food service departments in the country. And all their funds flow through a separate fund. And I do know that she has some specific investments for Jessica Shelley. I can't remember the specifics of them, but we will certainly include information about that at the next budget presentation. It's a great question because nobody ever asks about the things that are outside the general fund. But I do know that she had some very strategic investments in her budget. In terms of incorporating it into the classroom or in learning, I can't answer that.
Go ahead.
So coming before the board soon will be the proposal for a health adoption, which will also obviously include nutrition. In addition, several years ago, the board had the insight, the foresight to put into policy that each school has to have a wellness plan, which also includes nutrition. And so each year, the schools have to update their wellness plan, which obviously, like I said, includes nutrition. We have a pretty robust nutrition plan for our young people. To be quite honest with you, one of the things that we hear from our young people quite often is they don't like the food. And so Jessica Shelley, our director, has done a lot of work to make food more appealing to our young people. We have a lot of, if not all of, our elementary schools have a fresh fruit and vegetable grant in which fresh fruits and vegetables, try saying that fast, are brought right into the classroom on a daily basis. And kids have the opportunity to try fruit that they maybe wouldn't ordinarily try, as well as vegetables. We've also, Jessica Shelley has done a lot of work with salad bars within our schools, making it beautiful and appealing and flavorful. And so she's offered some spices that the kids can try on their salads. So we're trying to make it more like what a kid might experience like at a food court and make it a lot more appealing, but at the same time, healthy. We also have some food vending machines that have healthy vending options within them within our schools. And so Jessica Shelley has done a lot of work in terms of bringing to the forefront the highlight on nutrition and wellness within our district. This is something we can definitely follow up on and get you more specific details for our next presentation.
Mr. Murawski, did you have a comment on that?
Superintendent Mitchell took everything. I was just going to, no, it's wonderful. I was just going to reference the new health and wellness curriculum that we're slotted to adopt here in the next few weeks, so, which we have, Board Member Bolton's holding up and is available.
That's our nighttime reading, folks.
Yeah, for perusal.
Maybe I should just go read the health and wellness policy, but I do, I do want to comment that we really have been impressed by how much Jessica has done or Ms. Shelley has done. She really has, I know, worked very hard under phenomenal constraints to improve the school food environment in Cincinnati Public Schools. And her willingness to work on the GFPP has really been above and beyond. And I think for me, one of the things that I've heard from her is there's a lot of challenges in terms of where what she's doing connects into the classroom. And I wanted to sort of comment on the importance of figuring out ways to integrate these two programs that financially operate very siloed, but can be really leveraged to improve educational outcomes. There's a lot out there on doing things like school garden curriculums and farm-to-school. And I know there's already some amazing stuff happening in CPS. And I think I just want to ask that that kind of work continue to be supported and explored where it can be expanded in order to achieve really success in terms of implementing this new initiative.
We have quite a few of our schools, especially our elementary schools and some high schools, that have started gardens within the last several years. Some of them actually sell some of their vegetables in the little farmer's markets. So quite a few of our schools have that. One of our schools that has an environmental science focus, they are growing vegetables within their garden and within their school, which brings it into the classroom. They have a bicycle, a smoothie bike, where there's a blender on top and you put the stuff in there, and as you pedal, it actually spins the blender to make the smoothie. We also have a lot of our classrooms that have, and I can't remember what it's called right now, but an indoor garden tower where they are growing their vegetables, hydroponics. And so there are a lot of programs that are making their way into our schools regarding nutrition and wellness and into specifically the classroom, into the curriculum.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, one of the, we very much appreciate all the work that Ms. Shelley has done. And just to remind board members that she's feeding us tomorrow morning, so get there bright and early. Okay. Bright and early, eight o'clock is our meeting start, so get there early so you can eat. Other questions or comments? Board members, other questions or comments? Superintendent Mitchell, Treasurer Wagner, thank you so much for the overview. And as I understand it, the next budget hearing, which is April 17th at the Ed Center, will be a little more extensive and complete. You gave us a good start here, okay. So we look forward to seeing that. Tell all your friends and encourage people to come to that budget hearing as well. Anything else? Having no other agenda before us, I declare the meeting adjourned.